Guys, all ready? Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Morro Bay. This is April 16, 2019, and this is the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Sur Street, Morro Bay. We have a full complement here, so I'll call the meeting to order. Can we please have a moment of silence? All right, thank you very much. Please stand, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any Planning Commissioners announcements? Anybody wish to bring anything up? Okay. Then we'll move on to public comment period. This is the time we allow for the public to speak on items that are not, generally not on the agenda. If you have something, please come forward. Please state your name. Okay? Going, going, gone. Presentations? We have none. And then on the consent calendar, we have item A1. Just item A1. Do we have anybody who wish to comment on item A1? Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
I'm with the way adopt of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Any discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving on to public hearings. The first one on our agenda is item number B1. This is case number. It's a major modification, MAJ 19-002 to CUP 09-90 and CDP 13-90. This is at 1700 Embarcadero, Morro Bay. Staff, do we have, do we have any ex parte communications from anybody?
I did talk to one of the groundkeeper when I was looking at the property. I don't know if that really constitutes ex parte, but I did.
Okay, great. Okay. Staff, do you have a report?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a site that's owned by the City of Morro Bay and leased to the applicant. And it's highlighted on the right side. The applicant requested approval to install a solar carport over a portion of the inactive RV trailer storage area. The structure is 197 feet long and 37 feet wide. This image shows you the approximate location of the structure. This is a side view and then kind of a rendering. It's 22 feet at the highest point with a clear height of about 15 and 1/2 feet. And as I mentioned, the property is owned by the City of Morro Bay. The applicant has a lease with a term through 2028. The city has the right to request removal of the solar structure at the termination of the lease. And City Council reviewed this request a year ago in April 2018 and provided approval for the applicant to move forward with their application. This is kind of a site view of this, and this project meets the zoning setbacks and the height requirements for the zoning, which is M1 PDI. And staff recommends approval of the amendment MAJ 19-002 to the existing CUP and CDP to allow installation of the solar carport structure by adopting Resolution 06-19.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay. Nancy Do.
The applicant is here.
Pardon?
The applicant is here also.
Okay. Let's get through questions. I just had a couple. Did the city have any input on the design of the, or location of the structure?
No. You mean the City Council?
No, either City Engineering or City Council.
No.
Okay. Do we have, does the city have a right to, at the end of the lease, to have this, you know, the structure remain with the solar panels? Or would it be a buyout?
They have, well...
Or...
We have the right to ask for it to be removed, but I believe that the structure is going to be financed, so City Council will have to agree to allow financing, in which case then the lender will have the right to the structure.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll open the floor up for public comment. Would the applicant like to, to come forward? Okay.
Do I have to push anything, or can you hear me?
We can hear you. You might want to adjust the mic a little bit there. There you go. Please state your name.
My name is Terrence Johnson. I'm with AM Sun Solar. The owner is over there. He's having a little issues with his knee, so...
Okay. Okay, great, thanks, Terrence.
Okay, what question would you...
Actually, if you have a statement, or if you have any, do you want to move right to questioning, or...
Yeah, right to questioning list.
Okay, let me, let me see if there's anybody else from the public that would like to speak to the item, and if there is, then we'll, if there isn't, we'll have you come right back up then.
I gotta go back down now?
Yeah, please. Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else from the public that'd like to speak to this? Okay. Seeing none, do we have questions for the applicant?
Just one.
Okay. Terrence, I'm sorry, please come forward.
Actually, forgive me, because it's, it was just one of curiosity while I was there.
Sure.
And how do you, how do they typically keep pigeons off of these? I know it's, but I'm serious. I was talking to the groundkeeper, and is there, is there a way? Because I'm thinking of doing something like that myself.
For one thing, the solar panels collect the sun, and they collect the heat, so it's, it gets pretty intense up there with the, with the sun beating down on it. They don't want to, it's not a cool spot for them to hang out at.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Jesse?
I don't think so. I have a question for staff, but we'll, we'll...
We'll go back to that.
One more time, yeah.
Okay. Michael?
Yes, want to know, you're not storing anything, you're, you're just using the metering through PNE.
When you say storing, what do you mean by that?
Are you doing battery storage?
Oh, no, nothing like that. It's a grid tie.
It's just grid tied, so you're just doing a tradeback with the...
Yes, correct.
That's all I have.
Susan, do you have any questions?
Okay. I guess my question is location on it, as far as it's smack dab in the middle of the site.
Right.
You know, and future usage, or in case the site changes, changes use, especially after the wastewater treatment plant gets relocated? Have you thought about locating it either to one end, to one side of the property, or to the other, so that, that the site could be developed easier?
You mean after their lease is over with?
Or even if they want to do something else with that portion of the property during their lease?
Right now, from my understanding, it's just used for storage. Is there a plan on them doing anything different than that? Doug, is there a plan for them to do, is there a plan for you to do anything different than the use?
Okay.
So right now, it's just used for storage of RV coverage, so that's why we put it there, because they don't plan on doing anything with that area.
Okay. It's just, yeah, to me, it seemed almost like it could have been either towards one side or the other, and that would have left more of the site that could possibly be developed in the future without...
Well, one of the reasons why they put it there is because of the space, and so they put it there, this right now is only offsetting probably about 50, a little bit over 50% of their, their bill. And if they want to expand it, they can add maybe more later to offset 100%. So that gives us more room to expand if we want to expand in the future.
Okay. And just curiosity, are these double-sided panels?
Double-sided, no.
Yeah, HITs, or?
No.
No, single-sided?
Yes.
Okay. Would there be an increased efficiency with double-sided panels?
Well, they could, but it also increased the price quite a bit as well. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I guess, anybody else have? Okay, I think we'll close public comment at this point. So thank you very much.
All right.
Okay. Jesse, you had a question for staff?
Just one question. I mean, it seems relatively benign. I was just curious, was it just the coastal portion of this that brought this in front of the commission? Otherwise, this would normally be a ministerial type of thing?
It came forward to the commission because it's on commerce, it's development on commercial property.
Okay.
Okay, and discussion? Susan?
I'll just kind of speak to your comment. I'm not really concerned about the location, because I think that it's a relatively transitory type of structure. I mean, you know, if you decide to move it down the road, you're losing the concrete, and that's it. You still have this, you still have the superstructure. The panels probably have a lifespan of 10 or 15, 20 years tops anyway, so I'm not really that concerned. So I think once we get to the point where we're, you know, think about a master plan down there, it'd be relatively easy to relocate, so...
Yeah. Joseph, you have? Yeah, that's, I don't see it as a real hindrance because of that. You could probably, you know, cut it and grain it to a new location if need be.
It seems to me like a great plan, great location. You know, what better use for a parking lot than to collect some energy and use it? I'm all for it, and I'd be for it if you wanted to double it too and pay your whole bill with it, so...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the only thing I'm...
Nothing against it.
Yeah. The only thing I'm concerned about, and I'm sure this will be handled in structural, is just the wind loading on it, you know?
Part of what they have to submit to us.
Yep. Okay, good. All right, do we have a, okay, good.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for doing this. I think it's a great thing that we're, we're seeing it. I agree, it's an industrial site now. We don't have a master plan for this area. There's no special plans at this point, so I don't have any trouble at all. And I did check, my due diligence says that this seems like it's a massive thing, but it's not any bigger than, in length, than one of the ones at the high school. So it's, it's not something new for the community. We have things at this scale before.
Yeah, it's very similar.
Yeah. Yeah, and I too commend you for doing this. This is what we need to do to, to help with our greenhouse gas emissions. And so, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Chair, I'll move that the commission adopt or approve major modification MAJ 19-002 to CUP 09-90 and CDP 13-90 to allow the proposed structure of a solar, 197-foot-long solar. How is that?
Sounds good. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, you second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay. I guess we'll call the, call the question then.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Barone?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Aye.
Chairperson Lor.
Yes. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item B2 is case number CUP 18-10, and this is a combined concept and precise plan for 1279 Embarcadero in Morro Bay, and I believe this is the Coast Guard birthing addition. Any ex parte communication? Okay. All right, staff, let's, you got something for us?
I do, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson and members of the Planning Commission. This is the concept precise plan approval of conditional use permit 18-10 for the addition at the U.S. Coast Guard Station located at 1279 Embarcadero. On the map, there is the vicinity map, and here's a street view image from Google Earth, which shows the existing two-story Coast Guard building and the area of the proposed 806-square-foot addition, which would be on the east side of the building. Here's an aerial image. The figure in yellow there is the, where the existing Coast Guard building is today. And this shows a vicinity map of the lease sites. This is a city lease site. It's city lease site 141. The project description, as stated, proposes an 806-square-foot addition to the existing approximate 3,000-square-foot U.S. Coast Guard Station building. This proposed addition includes area for birthing rooms and restroom facilities to address Coast Guard personnel needs. The construction proposed is single-story on the east side of the building. The footprint area of the addition will impact five existing parking spaces with parking lot space reconfigured to convert a sixth space to provide for ADA parking for use by the Harbor Department Office, which is located to the south of the Coast Guard building. The building is located in the CF zoning district, which is commercial fishing. It is also located within a plan development overlay, and that is the reason for bringing this forth to the Planning Commission. Those publicly-owned properties that are within a plan development overlay require both a concept and a precise plan approval by the Planning Commission as well as the City Council. This project is being processed as a combined concept-precise plan, which the code allows due to the small-scale nature of the proposed addition. Upon, should the Planning Commission approve the project, the next step would be to receive approval by the City Council. And before I go into the development standards, the project is also located in the original jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission, and as required, they would have authority for either a coastal development permit, which is what the Planning Commission normally is familiar with. In this case, since this is a federal applicant, it's concurrents with Coastal Zone Management Act, and there was an attachment to your staff report, which includes this concurrence by the Coastal Commission with respect to that requirement. This slide lays out the development standards for the CF zoning district. It is also within the waterfront master plan. As noted on the screen and in your staff report, there, it calls out the different development standards as far as setbacks. The property, excuse me, the area of the addition is being proposed outside of its existing lease boundary, so as part of the project approvals, it will require a lease line amendment, and thus, that is the reason for the impact to the parking space. As stated in the staff report, the, the project boundaries are only being extended to the minimum amount necessary without causing any undue impacts to further parking loss. And speaking of parking, so as stated, the addition would extend into the parking lot. There are five parking spaces that would be lost as a result of this project. These are five parking spots that are currently reserved for U.S. Coast Guard personnel pursuant to their supplemental lease agreement with the City Council. These five parking spaces that are reserved for their personnel would be relocated to the east side of the parking lot across from where the addition will go. Okay, and then I got the second bullet there. And then in addition, as stated, there will be one spot reconfigured for the Harbor Department Building, which does intend to relocate the front door of the Harbor Department Building. Currently, it's accessed on the west side of the building, and they would be relocating that. There is a condition of approval that would require delineation of path of travel from that ADA parking spot to the Harbor Department Building. It's not currently shown on the plans, but that would be required prior to striking that and reconfiguring that. The project does not trigger new parking requirements, because as stated in the staff report, this is not an intensification of use. It is an addition that the Coast Guard is pursuing in order to meet essentially female personnel needs. Currently, right now, their space requirements do not allow overnight female personnel to be assigned to the Coast Guard Station Building, and this proposed addition would remedy that. The next few slides will show you the site plan and floor plan. Just to make these slides a little bit easier to see from a distance, the area in yellow shows the proposed addition, and then in addition to that, the applicant is proposing a three-sided nine-by-six-by-six high-pressure-treated lumber trash enclosure. As you saw in the earlier Google Street View image, it's not currently enclosed as the code would require. And then along the north side of the building, the project does include proposal of a 24-inch by 36-inch historic interpretive panel. Which is, okay, which is right in this area there. Here is a close-up of the proposed floor plan, and this is a single-story proposed at 16 feet 11 inches, so it does comply with the height requirement. And then included in your plan's middle is the visual simulations for this. This is showing the existing view from Embarcadero with Morro Rock in the background, and then the addition shows that area of the parking lot filled in with the single story. Here are some additional images showing you from the water side. That area in red is showing you where that proposed addition is to go. And then from the opposite side of the building, that area in red circled is showing you where the addition will be. The next couple of slides show the north, the elevations. This is from the northwest, and the dark areas, the area of proposed addition, as well as the southeast. The proposed exterior color and materials would essentially be to blend in with the existing architecture and color and materials of that existing gray and white that is currently there. The sloped roof on the addition would match the existing asphalt shingle roof. So as stated, the project is located in the waterfront master plan and within a plan development overlay. In this area of the city, there are exceptions to development standards allowed with the finding of significant public benefit. The project would exceed the maximum lot coverage for a lease site of this size. However, the, essentially, the Coast Guard building, the footprint of the building is essentially the size of the lease site. The project includes only expanding the lease site to the minimum amount necessary to accommodate the addition. If it were to comply with lot coverage requirements, it would result in additional parking spaces being lost. The approximate maximum lot coverage, or, excuse me, the approximate lot coverage is about 80 to 85%, and the requirement would be 70%. However, because it is in the plan development overlay, which allows for a finding of significant benefit, the Planning Commission can approve, improve, excuse me, approve the project because the proposed project provides significant public benefit in that the Coast Guard provides for and supports, excuse me, in that the Coast Guard actively supports, that the project actively supports the continued permanent presence of the Coast Guard as an essential element of boating safety in the region. Apologize for that. And it's also consistent with the city's general plan and local coastal plan, as well as the waterfront master plan. In addition, Coastal Commission concurred in their letter, which you will find as Exhibit B, and so therefore, staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation to City Council for approval of the CUP and adopt PC Resolution 07-19. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Okay. Then let's open it up for public comment, and with the applicant, please step forward, state your name, and...
Good evening. I'm Lieutenant Commander Jared England with the Coast Guard's Facility Design and Construction Center. I'm a project manager there. Just a brief statement, Cindy covered the, the project really well, I think. I just wanted to be here primarily in case there are any questions or concerns. This is a time-critical project for us and really important, so I wanted to be here to make sure that things go as smoothly as possible, and if there are concerns, to try and address them. But just to summarize a few of the points, the existing building is woefully undersized, about a third of our requirements, and there's several impacts to that. The first of which is that about half the number of beds for overnight watch standards is all that's in the building currently. So when, when they need double-duty crews, either the response time is delayed because they have to be at their homes, which can be far away, or the, the duty crews are sleeping on couches and floors. So not a situation that's ideal by any means. In addition, as Cindy mentioned, no female personnel can be assigned to station Morro Bay at all, just because there isn't the accommodation for them to, to stand watches, overnight watches. So that's a restriction. And both of those two issues would be addressed and corrected by this project. So really, a win for the project, even though overall, it would still leave the station undersized, and then we have a, a longer-term issue there that we've got to identify how we're going to work through. So really, that's all the comments I have. Thanks to the city staff, Cindy and Scott and Eric, been really helpful to us. This project kind of came up on a short timeframe, and they were instrumental in helping us get to this point, so that we've got a viable solution that, even though it isn't where we want it to be in a permanent solution, it greatly improves the station, makes life a lot better for the crew, and, and, you know, keeps us here in Morro Bay, which the Coast Guard loves. Morro Bay, we love this community. I've heard stories from people all over about what a great, great city this is, and really excited to, to be continuing to invest here. That's all.
Okay, great. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Mark?
Good evening. I'm Mark Dogginsini, commercial fisherman and owner of Dockside and Dockside 2. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight regarding the proposed United States Coast Guard addition. I have a close connection with the United States Coast Guard, as my son-in-law is a senior chief, an officer in charge at Cape Hatteras, North Carolina. Also, additionally, as a commercial fisherman, for over 45 years, I've benefited from numerous assists, including a vessel-saving assist in 205 when I grounded the Monty Marietta Point Sur. So tonight, I'm happy to speak in favor of a much-needed addition to the United States Coast Guard Station in Morro Bay. This addition shows the project can be within the scope and scale of our working waterfront and will serve the needs of our, the builder and the community. Recently, a project south of our location was started that is the exact opposite of the proposed Coast Guard Station. It does not fit in scale or size, and does not fit the character of the Embarcadero. I don't necessarily believe in architectural review boards, but in this case, visitors and residents alike may have benefited from a closer review before allowing that project move forward. It is obvious the United States Coast Guard has taken great consideration and planned well to have a project that fits Morro Bay. It will seem that it has always been there and give the United States Coast Guard crews the must-need, much-needed additional space that they need. I would respectfully ask the city and the United States Coast Guard to take into consideration several negatives that will impact surrounding businesses, such as our two restaurants and the fish market. First of all, the contractor staging area. It should not impede the flow of traffic into a one-way parking lot adjacent to Dockside and Dockside 2. The way that it is planned right now shows that there's no access into that parking lot that directly serves our businesses. Flow into and through this lot is paramount to our business success, not only for customers, but for employees, as well as service and delivery vehicles. There's a handout I've had... There's a handout I've handed you. You can see that the proposed contractor staging area, that blocks off that whole parking lot. There's no entry into that parking lot if that's allowed there. Number two, materials, equipment, as well as contractors' vehicles should not be allowed to park within the lot. I speak from experience, as crews that have worked on the project to our south continue to take valuable parking spaces that are vital to the success of our businesses, as well as interrupt access by our service and delivery vehicles. Most projects in most cities require parking mitigation plans for projects that may impact existing businesses. However, again, according to what Dockside Restaurants are experiencing at the present time, Moro Bay must not think it important enough to address this issue. In the restaurant business, parking spaces equal customers. When one loses parking spaces, then revenue is also lost. And when revenue is lost by us, it's also lost by the city of Moro Bay. Finally, I would request that 10 parking spaces that are now reserved for the United States Coast Guard, there's 10 of them, by their lease agreement be reduced to five, and their new building absorbed the five spaces. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm sorry I went over.
Okay. No, thank you very much. Okay. I think we'll bring the applicant back up, and then we'll have questions for staff. So does anybody wish, anybody have questions for the applicant? Go.
Hi. I just wanted to ask, did you look at any other elevational studies for the project at all?
As far as a taller structure, or...
I guess that, without getting into comments, I just wondered if there had been alternate studies for what the facade could look like.
Yes. Earlier on in this project, the history goes back for quite some time. There are a lot of different options looked at, but for this one, in order to get to something that we could execute within the time and budget we were working with, we really went fairly simple, with the objective of matching the existing building and its appearance and overall architectural look. We considered early in the project a two-story addition, but had some concerns with, first of all, the budget and with our timeframe. By the time we knew we were over budget, it would be too late and our funds would expire. And in addition, that would incur quite a bit more modifications to the existing building to defy our egress codes, et cetera. So we decided to just keep it simple.
Did you look at an all-flat roof at all?
I'm sorry?
Did you look at an all-flat roof?
All-flat roof? So we would be out of compliance with the city's sloped requirements as far as the percentage for the building to be, as far as sloped versus flat. So that's why we've got the half and half, so that we can be in compliance with that.
And did you look at extending the windows of the two sleeping spaces up there out as gables in order to get the slope across the entire face?
I don't know how much the architect looked at that option. We didn't discuss that directly. I know with some of the discussions I had with him, there was some concern about the interface between the existing building and the new building, just because the foundations can't be directly abutted with the type of construction. So there's a little bit of a buffer there, which would make some more complicated construction just a little tricky to get right.
Okay. That's all I have.
Susan?
Justin? Could you shed some light on this issue that's arisen about the staging area and blocking access to the restaurant that's west of the facility?
No, that's really important. I'm glad Mr. Tognazini brought that up. And it is going to be important that we maintain access to the rest of that parking lot during construction. I had anticipated that would be something that during the permitting process with the city for either the building permits or just the interruption to traffic flow, which is a requirement, I believe in the use permit that we do that, that the alternate traffic routes would be included in that permit. Because it's outside of our project or lease area, we would have to work with you guys for exactly how that looks, but I would anticipate that cars could be diverted around the west side of the building and then back into the parking lot on the other side, just during construction while that area is blocked.
Jesse? Any questions?
No, no questions.
What I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, was where are the other five parking spots that you're removing? Where are they going to be relocated to?
So the five spots aren't, as my understanding, they're not designated anywhere actually in the lease. There's this current signage. As far as the ones that are being displaced by the building, I don't know that a location has been identified from them or for them, where they'll be relocated to. And I know that our lease that includes those is up for renegotiation this summer, and it expected, as part of that, the number may go from 10 to five. So I didn't anticipate to request they be designated elsewhere.
Okay. Because I've noticed, you know, being down there, the traffic patterns, there's the parking area north of there that is lightly used, where from here, south is more highly used because of the commercial applications, also the Harbor Patrol Office, too. So I would advise moving any long-term parking or dedicated parking as far north as possible. That would keep the, that would impact the businesses less. And then also on the staging area, would it be feasible to stage, to use the fisherman storage area or over in the triangle lot as a staging area rather than that parking lot, which is a much higher use?
They're going to need some staging area adjacent to where they're doing construction. I mean, there's...
Yeah.
Mr. Tognazini correctly points out that it's tight to do work down there.
Right.
And when you have construction going on there, it's uncomfortable. But the more difficult we make it for them, the longer the construction's going to last, and the less people are, you know, I mean, it's a trade-off, right? I mean, we work with the applicants as they come forward to identify appropriate staging areas for their businesses and when they're doing construction. So, I mean, there's a number of options. Eric Andersby, the Harbor Director, myself, have talked, you know, about different options for them as it relates to this. Keeping in mind that we want to keep the parking lot open and create traffic available as much as possible, and so that, I mean, that's the intent behind, you know, how we'll move forward through the building permitting process.
So once again, could we just move the staging area north of the entrance there? You're talking about 20, 30 feet, and it would be more in front of Neil's oyster shed there, if I'm reading it correctly? You know, we're just, we're talking about north of the, in the entrance instead of south of the entrance. There's a lot less traffic in that parking lot.
It depends. I mean, again, they're going to, at times, they're going to need to be able to utilize the spaces that are probably, you know, directly adjacent. In fact, I would imagine at times, they're going to be delivering and offloading materials and those types of things. Having them that's not directly available adjacent to the building is going to make the construction process longer.
Do we have any precedent for a temporary kind of construction exit entrance? Well, temporary parking lot entrance south of where the area is designated? Have we ever done anything like that before for a major parking lot?
Not that I'm aware of, but I've only been here for about four and a half years.
Can you drive around the back, or the west side of the building? I mean, it looks on the map, it's tight, but it would be one-way. And it sort of is one-way coming in anyhow, so...
So I think, I think if we can just, I think the points we're getting across is just to minimize the staging area and the effect and the negative impact it has on, you know, on the commercial spaces there. So, you know, to work with staff to try to optimize, you know, the access to the businesses.
That's a one-way parking.
Right. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Or...
Just, it's not a question.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I think we'll close the public comment at this part. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm going to start with something on this, you know, just with staff, too, and we may need to open up public comment again for it. But is this a, is this a project that we could create a nexus to get, because we're dealing with parking, we're altering parking long-term and dedicated parking, and we're giving up parking spaces from the public parking side, you know, eventually, that we can have them implement a fast, a level-three EV charger, either in this parking lot or across the street by the pump station?
Through their supplemental lease agreement, they're required to pay, I think, $75,000 for the removal of the parking spaces.
Okay.
So they're paying us for that, I mean, they're removing those parking spaces, but they're paying for them.
So that's consistent with our, that's our parking in lieu?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they've met the requirement for losing those parking spots?
We need to, you know, one of our priorities is to get EV charging down on the Embarkadero. And I see this as whether we use those in lieu fees, if we can dedicate them or dedicate the allotment of them, or have them do that in lieu of the in lieu fees, to create a EV charging station that is actually, would pay for itself over time.
So the $75,000 is covered in the supplemental lease agreement that's been executed and approved by council?
Okay. Can we condition this, can we condition this project to have an EV charging station? To require them to install EV charging stations?
They meet all their parking requirements. I think that's a bit of a stretch.
I would think there's a lot of different contracts coming up on the waterfront right now, and a lot of projects going forward, and probably better spaces to make that a requirement, closer into where more of the traffic is, and...
Well, the best space, one of the best spaces down there is the, is the pump station across the street. You've got three-phase power going right to it. You could drop, you could drop the leads right down to the stations. It would get parking into that, that triangle parking lot area by the Maritime Museum and get full access to, and relieve some of the congestion that would cause by it further down the Embarkadero.
So it seems like that's a good goal to work towards, and maybe some of the other parking in lieu fees could be used for that? I don't know what's in the...
If I can help here, I mean, so we're only going to favor a recommendation, one way or the other. Maybe we can recommend that the council start thinking about these types of things in their approvals, because they're going to approve this, we're not. We're going to, we're going to forward a recommendation, so they're going to end up with the decision-making authority on this anyways.
Well, we've been looking for a project that has parking nexus in this area, you know, and this, to me, seems the ideal project.
I disagree, honestly. I mean, it's a federally funded project. I think there, I just don't, I don't know if I want to, I don't know if I want to walk down this hill.
Yeah. But we're changing dedicated parking. We're changing, we're, you know, they're already involved in the parking situation, and this is one of our stated goals, is to get this. So I don't see another project coming up that is directly related, any of these other projects use public parking and not dedicated parking. So this is where I see where our nexus is most closely aligned. And if they're, they're doing the in lieu fees, I think the, I think we could recommend to council to use those in lieu fees to get a, you know, fast charging, you know, system.
I would be in favor of at least mentioning it to them in the recommendation.
Okay. Okay, that was my main comment. I've got a couple more, so I'll let everybody else speak, and then we'll come back to it. So who wants to, who wants to come forward, speak up on this?
You know, I admit, when I looked at the property, I wasn't thinking about, and I should have been, about the congestion during the course of construction, but if memory serves me right, then the parking spaces that are south of the facility are diagonal parking spaces, and then access to those parking spaces would be rather difficult. I mean, as in, you're going the wrong way? Am I wrong about that, or what?
There, I mean, it is angled parking.
Yeah.
And angles, and the angle access point is toward the north.
Yeah, so that's...
Driving north to south.
So that's, those parking spaces that are opposite the candy store and the restaurant are placed in a pretty difficult position. And so are the people who are attempting to park, are making it very difficult. So I think we have to sort of think about that, and maybe the, you know, maybe the thought of creating a temporary, you know, driveway to access those better is, I don't know.
Well, there's access on the parking lot north of there.
Yeah.
There's a second, second access, so there's access there, and there's an exit there just north of this, too, so...
But as I recall, if you turn, you turn into it right there at the Coast Guard facility, and then you, you drive south, looking for a parking space, and the next available driveway opening is a considerable distance down that parking lot, I think.
Well, we also are dealing with, we have long-term parking, I mean, their parking requirements are long-term parking, you know, overnight berthing or, you know, day shifts, you know, eight-hour shifts, or whatever their shifts are. Whereas, so those parking lots, unless they're immediately, it seemed like they could be relocated a little further away, you know, 50 feet, 100 feet away, and not impact the long-term parking, as opposed to having private parking or, you know, you know, having, you know, the businesses where they, they come and they stay an hour, they park there an hour, and then they change over. So in the, in more highly-regarded areas.
Yeah. I just, I just think maybe one of the unintended consequences here is that, is that the businesses south of the Coast Guard are going to have their parking spaces pretty severely impacted, unintentionally, because the striping is the wrong way, and there's no good way to get to those parking spaces in the, in the flow of traffic the way it should be intended. Am I confused, or does that make sense?
Well, I think the point is we have that main access, the road for running through there, open most of the time. They're going to, they're going to have to close it sometimes because they're going to be bringing material to the construction site, and they're going to be offloading it. Probably, it's sort of like you're talking about, oh, they can stage down further. Well, not necessarily, because they're going to need to probably use the parking spaces that are right across from it to put material in it, is my guess. I mean, that's normally how that would happen.
Bob Fowler stages over the triangle. He doesn't walk off the parking lot. Except three times a month.
Mark...
We, we're going to work with them similar that we did the Fowler's project. So, I mean, it's not going to be entirely staged right there. A lot of the, a lot of the material that comes in can be staged offsite, and that's what we're going to do, the same thing.
And it also, you know, some of the material that's most critical can be staged in their parking areas, you know, and not, not, not impact the driveway areas.
Yeah.
So that's, that's all I think we're requiring, is that, is that they keep the driveway access open, and I don't, I really don't see a problem with that in staging. I've done a lot of commercial projects, I mean, I've done a lot of construction projects.
I understand Mr. Tognazini's concerned about it. I mean, we're going to work through that over there, you know, it's going to be, he's not happy with Mr. Fowler's project either, so, but largely, I think, you know, that hasn't, it's actually worked okay, and we're going to do something similar here.
And if, when you're moving materials, you're mostly moving them with a forklift, you know, unless you're, so...
Well, okay, so Mr. Tognazini's point is well-received and correct, and I agree. I want to start, though, by saying thank you to the Coast Guard for your mission and for what you do for this community. So, and I think, I want to make sure we hit that hard on the head. Your mission is well-needed and well-deserved, and we appreciate you having you here. That being said, I think the project's, you know, worthwhile, and I probably would be in favor of recommending a favorable recommendation to the City Council if we can work through the parking situation. And, you know, it's a single-story, light-frame construction building. I don't see cranes and forklifts. forklifts, I mean, concrete trucks, once, maybe twice, you know, we should have very few pores, obviously, we would need to shut down that area during the concrete pores. Otherwise, I say these guys should be parking, these guys in Galles should be parking on the other side, over by the inlet building, and, and walking over and, and, you know, delivering materials as, as they need to, but I don't see the whole, the point in blocking that entire drive approach through there.
And we're not gonna do that.
Right. To the, to that point, I think we should, we should address Mr. Tocchazini's recommendation and have the staging area revised before we, before we forward a favorable recommendation to the city council, and provide some sort of a traffic plan. That's my comment.
Okay. Okay. Next?
I'm, I'm just disappointed in the way that it presents its, its face to the Embarcadero. This is our major corridor for people going down to the rock. Hopefully, we'll have another investor across the street at some point, and, you know, I'm totally behind the mission, I'm totally behind the outcomes, I don't necessarily share the concerns of my colleagues, but I'll go along with the majority on the temporary conditions. But I, I don't think, for a facility that's probably gonna be here another 20 years or something like that, this is the best foot to put forward for addressing what we want our waterfront to look like. I think I'd be happier if it was all flat, or if they bracketed the, you know, the, those are sleeping spaces up there, they're required by code to have a sill at a certain height and be able to escape out through the roof, and I understand that, but they could bracket the flat roof part with wings of sloped roof that I think would make the elevation when you're approaching from the south, which are, is our major visitor elevation better, and I think if there were a continuous slope with those windows pulled out as gables, that's, that's also possible. So I, I don't wanna endorse what I see here right now.
Izzy?
That's interesting, I, I thought it was a plan that was real consistent with the building that was there, and, and the proposed views, at first, you can hardly even tell there's something new, except that it did move into those parking spaces, so, you know, I feel like the building is consistent with itself as designed, and I, I like sloped roofs better than flat ones, personally. I feel like, seems like there's some consensus on helping facilitate the best movement of traffic possible, and it sounds like that's part of the plan, that you would be working with the applicant on how to stage closures kept to a minimum, and certainly seems that relocating parking spaces probably to the north, or, you know, the permanent ones. I was there on Sunday, and I think there was one government vehicle in the five spaces next to the building, and maybe just a few public vehicles on the part across the way, but there's, there's a lot of parking in that area, both on the Embarcadero, on the east side, and certainly, there were a lot of spaces empty, and it was a busy weekend, so that, that part doesn't concern me too much. I don't know how often they have a full complement of five officers who are there parking. Construction workers, certainly, they like to be close to their trucks, but to, to ask them to park off-site makes sense to me, and, and I think most often, they will comply, you know, if they need to bring their vehicle in to offload equipment, they'll do it, but, and, and it's a small enough addition that I would assume the construction will be fairly quick. Like, I don't think we're talking about months and months and months of construction, it's probably maybe three to four weeks, maybe a little more, I don't know. Depends on the weather, I suppose. So, you know, again, I think it's really important that we have the Coast Guard here. It's the only location on this part of the coast, I think it's really important that we work to have women there, too. So I appreciate the project, and would certainly recommend to council to approve it.
Okay. Jesse, go ahead.
It occurred to me, Scott, and, yeah, I don't know why it didn't occur to me earlier, so Eric Ennersby's office is right next door, right?
Correct.
So he'll be policing the traffic as necessary, right?
Literally, right in his backyard.
Right, so, and I'm sure, you know, he's gonna wanna make sure that, that ambulance and fire trucks are able to get through, so he's gonna keep an eye on that, and I would be willing to favor, recommend a favorable recommendation to the city council, if we just kind of put that language in there, that, you know, Mr. Ennersby will kind of keep an eye on, making sure, when possible, it's open as often as possible.
So the, kind of how this all works will be worked out between Eric and myself for their plan, where, I mean, we'll, we'll come up with how it stages, how it operationally they're able to, you know, noticing when they're gonna be able to shed, when they're gonna be shutting down the road if they need to, how we're gonna be directing folks around the building, we'll have all of those sort of traffic, you know, requirements in a plan that goes into, you know, that gets submitted along with their building plan.
Okay. One thing I didn't see, I didn't see any lighting detailed out. Do we, have you received any specifications on their, on the exterior lighting?
Only that the lighting would be consistent with the existing fixtures that are on the building, so nothing, you know...
Usually, when we're, we're requested to approve a precise plan, we see more detailing, and I'm a little disappointed in that, on this. I guess my comments are on the, the building and the design, I share, you know, Michael's concerns about this, but quite frankly, I think it's a rather poorly-designed building to begin with, you know, and so I would like to, you know, I would actually like to see a more, a better-evolved design on it, and a better resolved, especially that facade. But I also respect what the Coast Guard does, you know, does here, and I respect their mission, and it's a necessary mission, and I think that this addition is really necessary for, for their integration of their, of their staff and of their crew. So I'm not gonna stand, you know, I'm not gonna stand against, against this, but I think this is our, you know, once again, I think this is the best nexus we've got coming up in the short or medium term to get an EV charging station, and this is right there where we need it, you know, or across the street, so... Do we have a motion? Does anybody wish to continue this, or do we, do you wanna make a motion here?
I would like to make a motion, I just wanted to clarify a few things, so if we were to recommend a favorable recommendation, how would we do that to amend mentioning the EV charging and the, the traffic plan in a way that is consistent with procedures?
Put it in our plan?
So, I mean, so the EV charging station, again, money was paid in, in the form of, effectively, in lieu fees, $75,000, you could make a recommendation. But that'd be used for creation of an EV charging station, fast charger down on the waterfront? We would certainly convey that to the council as part of, if a favorable recommendation is successful, then we would be happy to convey that to the council.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a thought, you know, we're, there's just, there's a certain reluctance on my part to add too many things, because of the knowledge that we're dealing with the federal agency, and has expressed a limited timeframe and a limited budget. But, but, you know, and I imagine the same sort of reluctance will be felt by the city council, but it might be an interesting discussion for them to have at that time as well, to sort of feel out exactly how tight their budget is, and how tight their, their can, their timeframe is, meaning, we're, we're very, you know, grateful that they're located here, and we certainly don't wanna endanger the expansion, and I agree, it's, it's very important that, you know, women be able to participate in the services here. So we'd, I'd like, they might like to find out just how much flexibility there is, and likewise, your charger as well, you know?
Well, as I understand what we're talking about here, it wouldn't be supplant, or affecting their budget so much as affecting the city's in lieu fees that they've already, they're already on the hook to pay, so we wouldn't be asking the, the Coast Guard to come up with any additional funds, more how, recommending to the city council how they might spend the funds they've already.
Yeah, and so if, if the council were receptive to that, they could just plug that into the work program for the next fiscal year, as a capital project.
I was specifically addressing the, the appearance of the building, you know, we might be able to make some modifications, but again, that might be, I wouldn't want it to be a bridge too far, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. And I would go, I would go along with that as a, not as a condition, but as a recommendation.
I would agree with, with the chair, it's, it's not a great-looking building already, so, no offense to the Coast Guard.
You know, we also had quite a bit of talk about a combined Coast Guard and Harbor, Harbor Patrol building. Did they move forward on this?
So there's, there's been a lot of talk about that over the, over the years, and so one of the, one of the reasons this, this, gosh, we've been talking about this now for three years now, most recent, the most recent effort, and, you know, that was part of some of the conversations early on, you know, they're, one of the issues they're really running into right now is their funding's about ready to go away if we don't get through this process, so they can go out to bid and get, you know, with their construction contracts and those types of things, so there, there's a little bit of time is of the essence scenario happening right now, and, and so that we were trying to facilitate this moving forward, and even so much so that while they were putting the numbers together, as Jared indicated, you know, they were concerned that maybe the two-story option, which would have been better, wouldn't still have gotten them all the square footage they wanted, but would have provided more, they were concerned that the budget might not work, and then they'd find out it wouldn't be able to do anything, so they went with a more modest, you know, single-story, because they knew they had enough money to do that. Anyway, I mean, so that, some of that conversation took place, it just wasn't anything that we could make work in the, in the timeframe that we were in, moving forward, it didn't seem like there was, you know, was really many options there for that to happen, we certainly kicked the, kicked it around quite a bit, and early discussions just couldn't seem to make it work, and so we'll have to come up with some other solution in the future for, for what we do with Harbor.
Okay. I think I'm gonna open back up to public comment, and I think we can get, you know, we have limited public out there, so I think we can have a discussion, it's just you two guys, so, would you mind stepping forward and maybe making comment on what our discussions are?
Sure. So I guess the, the EV charging stations, as mentioned, if that existing fee can be redirected, that's really simple for us, but if it's a separate action, then our lawyers review every solicitation, and if it's not directly tied to the project and why Congress approved it, we could, we could potentially run into some problems there if it's not in support of this. So I think if using the existing fee already paid or in the works is an option, that's the one I would prefer. As far as staging areas, fully agree, we've got to keep access to the restaurants in some way. Right now, our, our scope requires that contractors don't interrupt the existing traffic patterns without providing a traffic plan ahead of time for how they're going to reroute traffic temporarily. However, it is, we do need to be on the same page as far as the staging area, the one shown on the map, adjacent to the construction, one is, is somewhat small, and I'd anticipated they might need to work with the city separately to get an alternate location for some larger items temporarily, but the advantage of it being adjacent, obviously, is then there's no back-and-forth and interruption to traffic that's coming through. In addition, because the building is going right up adjacent to the travel lane in the parking lot, then having some sort of buffer, and then still enough room left for cars to travel, would be challenging there. But again, as mentioned, hopefully, this will be a short construction period, at least for the exterior of the building, and then once we're inside, we can open back up the normal traffic pattern there. As far as, as the overall project for this one, because we've really scaled down to the one-story option, the, the timeline is what is most critical for this project. We've been pushing this very hard, and with our continued aggressive agenda, we're projecting to award in August, and the funding expires in September, so we don't have a lot of flexibility there at all before it expires, and, and we're back to square one. And I, I mentioned earlier what you were alluding to with the possible combined Harbor Master and Coast Guard building, or a better long-term solution, and what that would look like. Our typical planning process would takes, would take 10 years before we got kind of back in the, in the loop for a bigger, better project. So, so it would be out there, and, and I'm recommending to Civil Engineering in Oakland that they engage you guys as soon as they have capacity on planning and working through what the long-term solution for the Coast Guard in this region is like, because this, this isn't it, and they need to, to start that 10-year window now, so that, that we can be in the works, and then hopefully get a building that, that looks better and meets our needs, and hopefully, if there's a way to do a combined facility that makes sense, I know that on this site seems to make a lot of sense to me, but I know there's, there's just a lot of challenges and hurdles that have to be worked through, and unfortunately, on this project, our, our time ran out, and it was do, do this relatively simple, straightforward addition or nothing. And then in addition to some of the, the facade concerns, really, it was just matching the existing building was, was the driver for that, we didn't want it to look like an addition, and didn't, we're concerned about redoing the facade for the entire building, again, the budget was a concern there, but if we made the addition look differently, we thought that would be less desirable.
Let me ask a question, if I may. As far as your long-term mission with Diablo decommissioning, I know one of the primary purposes of your mission here was the protection of Diablo, you know, fast access to Diablo, and, and because we're a port, port of refuge, is there long, is there, if Diablo decommissions is, are, is, do you think that the Coast Guard will downsize its staffing and mission here?
I, so first off, I'm not familiar with what Diablo is, sorry, I live in Seattle.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's a nuclear power plant.
Okay, okay.
So...
So first off, I'm, I'm an engineer in Seattle in my cubicle most of the time, and can't speak directly to any of those operational-type decisions as far as forced laydown, et cetera, but it is, so moral-based staffing is typical of what you would expect for a surf station, and the requirements of having two ready boats, as well as crews in the reserve to keep the mission going. They can't really get any smaller and maintain that minimal competency, so I don't, I, I don't see why the power plant going away would change their staffing.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further questions, while we have them up? Okay, thanks a lot for your explanation. Mark, would you like to speak to this now?
Yeah, I wanna make, I wanna make the perfect, I'm absolutely in favor, and I, and I think it's, fits the character down there, and maybe it's not the perfect solution, but I think it's what they need to do at this time to meet the requirements, so I'm really in favor. I think you'll never even know it wasn't originally there when they're done. I'm, I'm just as, what happens to us down there with projects on either side of us and the city not doing what they should do as far as impacts on our business, it's the cumulative effect. It's not today, two hours, we got closed, it's today, and then it's tomorrow, it's next week, and, and so what happens at the end of six or eight or 10 months, especially if it happens at noon, 11:30, 1 o'clock, it's impactful, it, it really costs us money. So consequently, you know, we pay 3% food, 5% alcohol, so when it costs, that to the city, so for that lease site, when it costs me money, it costs them money. So I'm not quite sure why they don't protect us a little bit more, but I'm absolutely in favor, I think it's a great project, I think that, that parking lot there, that's not ours, it's public, it's about 65 spaces, so if that proposed area there, the, the staging area, that's about 18, 19 spaces, that's 20% of that parking lot. It's a lot. So I, I think, I think you have to remember that. So, I think you have to remember that. To flow around the backside of it, I don't see why they can't stage at the, in front of the, either in the triangle lot, which is going on now, or they can't stage in front of the suction house, the PG&E. I mean, it's not that far away. I just think it's imperative that that parking lot keeps open. And when they say, as, when you hear the words, "We'll do the best we can," or "to a minimum," minimum's in the eye of the beholder. And a minimum could be, oh, we're gonna shut it down for three hours a day, five hours, whatever, and it's the cumulative effect that affects my business at the end of the year. And it's year after year after year, and I'm asking the city to be a good landlord, because I'm one of their tenants, and I think it's important. But I'm, we're in favor of the project. I wanna see it go forward. I hope everybody understands that. It's a great project, we need it. I just don't think you can anyway close that lot off and not impact me, unless it's after 10 at night and before 10 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll close. Public comment back up. So, I think your recommendation is if staff could work with the businesses down there when the final staging and, because parking plan is finalized, then that would be helpful. So, do we have a motion, or do we have, where are we gonna go with this?
There was a motion that started to be made by Commissioner Barone.
I started.
We started a discussion on it.
Yeah, I wanna, I'm not sure how to phrase what I'm thinking in my head, and that's, to the greatest extent possible, leaving one, leaving traffic open through the parking lot. And I don't quite know how to say that.
So, I mean, you can just simply say that. I mean, we can put a condition in there that requires the applicant to submit a staging and traffic control plan, and that, you know, the main corridor that remain open, you know, like you said, as much as feasible possible. And we'll work through what that, you know, what that looks like and what it'll take to, when it's gonna be shut down, and maybe we have them provide notices to the surrounding businesses. It's not, I mean, it's not rocket science.
Okay. I just don't know how to say it.
So, I think if we do the traffic control plan, if we're gonna have sustained closures of it, that we give notices ahead of time to the other businesses that are over there that are affected by it, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. So, I guess what I'll say is with that condition, however you choose to word it, to the city council and the chair's recommendation, that we at least mention the EV charging station as a possibility in lieu of the in lieu of fees. Using the in lieu of fees, I would recommend CUP 18-10, Concept Precise Plan at 1279 Embarcadero. We favor, we recommend, or we forward a favorable recommendation to city council.
Do we have a... And adopt Resolution 0719?
And adopt Resolution, where's that at? 0719. I don't see that, but okay. Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for the help.
I'll second that.
Okay, so then we've got discussion on this. Anybody? Michael?
I just wanna say I'm gonna vote against it, not because I disagree with any of the amendments that have been made. I just want the vote to show that there was an issue with the aesthetics.
Susan? Joseph?
No, I'll support it.
Okay. Well, we're just talking about discussion.
I agree that, you know, this could have been more well-thought-out, it could have been better planned, and I just, I think the mission's too important, the getting the female staff or, you know, females in there, I think that's too important to miss this opportunity, so.
Yeah, I agree that the whole building could have much better aesthetics and tie into the Morro Bay ethos a lot better. But, and then the one, it seemed to me on the plan that we had, the edge of the building is pretty close to the traffic flow plan. Are there, I didn't see any requirements for barriers or, you know, curb stops or...
We didn't condition it for that. They're gonna have to provide that, though, at the corner of the buildings. You're gonna have to have protections.
Okay, and are we not gonna see this project again before it gets built?
Correct, you're not gonna see it again.
Okay. So, okay. Anybody else? All right, let's call the question.
Can I ask real quick? Who originally built the building? Was that a city building, or was it built by the Coast Guard decades ago, or...
It was built by the Coast Guard in 1990, or...
Okay. So, not that long ago. All right, thank you.
They build better boats, I gotta say. Okay, let's go ahead and call the question.
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Barone?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffio?
Yes.
Chairperson Lor?
Yes.
Wish it passes for one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, you know, we do, I would just wanna reiterate that we're ever grateful for the mission that you have here, and, 'cause this is a fishing village, and they're, you know, and the recreational boating, too, has, you know, been dependent on your services here. So, thank you very much for all of that that you do. Okay. Yeah. All right. Moving on to new business, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Planning commissioners' comments and future agenda items? Okay. Community development directors' comments?
I don't have any.
Okay.
Do we have our goal-setting stuff Thursday with the city council? Isn't the meeting this week?
Do we have a goal-setting thing coming up? I didn't know it was with the planning commission. Did they...
No, no, no. City council is, but it would be a good thing for the public to remember, to show up at. 6 o'clock, I believe, at the community center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just give me one second.
I should have brought that up earlier, sorry.
No, it's on my calendar. I just wanted to make sure that that was, what the timing was on it. So, yeah, 6 o'clock, yes, community center.
Okay, Thursday.
Yeah.
Everybody show up and have good ideas for the city and what to do moving forward.
They'll be taking them through an exercise, too, kind of, like we did something similar last year, I think, so.
Okay, then, if nothing else, then we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Street, on May 7, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone.